All right, I wish Ray to start this meeting. It'll be on seven thirty. Um, all right, everybody rise. I just. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Oh.
For Richard's fans. One nation, under God.
One nation, under God. Visible virtue and justice. For. All right. All right. Why don't you say your eyes of your hair? Randy Hackett, here.
Here.
Ross Garretts.
Here.
Mary Lynn.
Here.
Noel Gerard.
Here.
Mark Tron.
Here.
Here we are.
All right, looking for cruel of agenda.
Randy, if we can add one more piece, it's up to the group, obviously. Can everybody hear me okay? Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me, please. Good, thank you. Anyway, as we take a look, I want you all to know that David Lem, we didn't want to negotiate his until we got the three unions done. We got the three unions done and then COVID nineteen struck and he has been running his tail off ever since. Finally, he came and talked to me late last week and said, can I finish my contract? He is almost worked a year without a full contract. And I did put everything that you wanted at the back. You can see what he asked for.
Um, as far as open meeting law goes, this is a special meeting. And you have to give three days notice of the items going to discuss on that special meeting. Typically, it's for a special meeting is called to discuss an item, which is what we did last time. Was have a special meeting for one particular subject. I noticed there's at least two additional subjects that weren't posted in the newspaper. And we didn't find out ourselves until two days ago. The standard is three days notice, just so we're on the up and up with this open meeting law.
John, you're on mute.
Noel, that's fine if we don't want to discuss it at all. We don't have to take action on it at all if you don't want it, but the key is you've got that piece. David will wait till the next meeting, but I wanted you people to see it. And so at least you have it there. And I'm not sure what you're talking about the second part. Both parts were in there. In the paper.
Yeah, I think when we decided to have a special meeting, we had already voted on the non-hire of the assistant coaches that were on that list. And the reason for the special meeting was to decide how much to pay the coaches that were already hired. Is that correct?
That's what you said at the meeting. That is correct, but I added the second item on there out of necessity. These four people that are on your list all worked. By Gatsby, the new Gatsby rules, if they work, we have to pay them. They worked. And by that, it would be called wage theft if we didn't. That's why they're on there.
Okay, um, yeah, we want to be fair to the employees that worked. If we could see their logs, then we could have an idea of what to pay them.
So. So certainly, I mean, we're just trying to approve the agenda, right?
Correct.
So, so maybe let's look at the agenda and then go to this discussion, which I think we're getting into, right? So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Um, but I, I don't think I want to add the amendment for the administrator contractor. Um, I would, it's nice to have it and I definitely think it should be on our next meeting, but I would approve only the discussion on the position and salaries, if I can do that.
I'll second that.
All right, I'm back now.
Lee Holm, I'd like to second Ross's motion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented or amended?
Presented.
Presented, we're not going to amend it with the network administrator contract.
Okay. Okay, it was moved by Director, is there a discussion? It was moved by Director Garrett and seconded by Director Holm to approve the agenda as presented. You will vote by saying aye for the motion and nay or whatever against the motion, Noel. Randy Hackett, aye. Ellie Holm.
Aye.
Russ Garretts.
Aye.
Mary Lynn.
Hi.
Noel Gerard.
Hi.
Mark Petron.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero zero. Okay, moving on to discussion and information, athletics positions and salaries. In front of them, everybody should have the stuff that was pushed out to us through from the administration. John, would you like to speak to these and explain them? John, you're muted.
Actually, the person that should explain them is Tony. Tony's the one that needs to explain. He knows them far better, but anything that, most of the things you see on there were requested by board members. For example, the percentages that other schools are working, how much money other schools work. There was some concern by a board member that some schools, of course, accepted everything because they were less than. You know, they only paid a thousand dollars for somebody, let's say, rather than a five thousand dollar bill. But what Tony did on a moment's notice, he put everything together and you can see what the range is for each one. Some of them don't have a range because the people have been there for a certain amount of time and that's all he got from them. Like ours is ranged based upon where they are in the salary schedule.
So I, I guess I'll kick it off for discussion unless if Tony wants to walk through. But one of the things that I was thinking I was also going to see is like prom or yearbook or I, I, I'm guessing there's other things that I don't know about or what's, are they not included or they are?
They are not included because all those have all but a little bit is completed. The major part of prom, for example, the prom was all but attended. Everything was done except the attendance, which is, we didn't pay the people that were supposed to chaperone. Because there were more than one chaperone. Same way with the play, the only thing that was missing was the performance for two nights. Two performances, everything was completed for the play. I'm trying to think, knowledge bowl completed, student council completed. You go through, everything is there within, you know, a day or two max. Good question.
Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off of John's comment. Most of the advisor positions are year-long positions or school year-long positions. So they are coming hours from the beginning of the school year through the end of the year. That's why they're not included in that spring sports or activity list because anything that usually says advisor is an annual participation.
Well, I'll take the floor here because I've been all over the board on this. And I just wanted to hear what everybody else thought about it. So I've been talking to other schools, people in other schools, and I've heard everything from prorated to full pay, fifty percent pay. Been talking to people and my only question is, is there is something to be said that if somebody said that they were going to do this job, they didn't apply for something else. So they took it. I don't know. You know, I, I don't know what that means. I, I just want to hear what everybody else has to say about it.
Randy, can I say something?
Go ahead, Ellie.
Okay, so I've had, and I understand where you're coming from, talking to the other schools in this spreadsheet that Tony gave us is awesome. I've been talking to more community members and citizens and parents and everything. And kind of asking them, you know, what was done, what their kids, you know, were involved in prior to the cancellation of the season. Definitely taxpayers, you know, they've reached out to me. I haven't really reached out to them. I was more parent, student reaching out. And when I go through, you know, the list of duties and then I think on the email we had gotten just the like coaching, you know, how many days were started before the season. I believe there was some pitcher catcher practice for the baseball. I think maybe one week of practice with the whole team. I do get a little confused on the distant coaching days and maybe Tony can add in on that when he speaks to it. What, you know, what was entailed in those days? I just have. I think if we start looking at who was affected by a season not happening, I had transportation, you know, they rely on those days and extra trips and you know, that extra money that they get out of the seasons too, and they're out of it. I just don't. I don't want to open a can of worms. And I guess as far as how I feel personally about it, if it was me doing it. I don't know, I just talking to everybody, I have a hard time when you didn't have a season. I, I understand there's things you prepare. Every person prepares for a job. I prepare for a job, I don't get paid for preparing for that job. I understand that there's, you know, a lot of planning. When I looked at like, say, you know, we was past practice and they get paid or whatever. This is just such an unnormal situation that I, I know, I'll wind it up. I guess the taxpayers, parents and community members I've talked to really have a hard time grasping why we would be paying for a season that wasn't played.
Glad, John. Yeah, what I want to say with this is what few people understand is, yeah, the practices, the regular practices were called off. Part two, though, the Minnesota State High School League said, keep practicing, but you can't do it physically. It's an online, it's a distance practice. And there were a number of things that were required of coaches to do. They could not force any kid to do anything, but they were supposed to keep a log of everything. Tony can tell you in a minute when I'm done or whoever's got other questions that Tony can answer it. They stayed on until the day, and matter of fact, the day before, the governor said, that's it. Minnesota State High School League then said, it was it. There was belief, Tony, you, you can back me up on this. Tony was talking about, no, no, they think they're going to be playing games. They think they're going to, they're not quite sure how, but they think they're going to play games. Maybe it's just a tournament format, you know? The problem came with some other games like track. So I don't know if somebody else has got, but what we did is we sat down and I put down recommendations that we had sitting down, talking with Tony, talking with Don and myself, suggestions based on that. And these are our recommendations, if you notice the sheet I put in there, but we couldn't beat until we had all the data collected.
Exactly, Mary.
Noel, did you have something to add?
Yes, please.
Mary, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mary.
I'm sorry, thank you. I, I agree with Ellie, I too have contacted a number of people. Both coaches in other districts and soups and some of the people I've known over the years. I believe that if you do the work, you get paid. I don't care. This is an extremely unique situation. And here is where I have to refer to our A D and ask him what his opinion is. What do we do in these types of circumstances? They have got an unstable deal. So Tony, I'd leave it up to you, I guess, because I, I would not know how do we create how people work. Thanks, Noel.
Go ahead, Noel.
Um, yeah, I'd, uh, to be fair to our, our coaches, I want to pay people for the work they did. But to be fair to our taxpayers, I don't want to pay people for what they didn't do. And keep in mind, whatever we do, the six of us tonight is going to set the precedent. And that will be the past practice. So if we're fair to everybody, and it should be a good past practice. If we do something silly, it's going to be past practice just as much. And I would like to see those logs. I heard there was mentioned several times that there were logs, but I don't think the board is seeing any of them, have you?
John?
Yeah, I agree with Noel with the first part that he talked about is we will be setting precedent. And that's something that we considered when we set this all up. Let's say for some reason we don't have a fall season at all. Depends when it's called, what has been done to set it up. Or let's say in the winter season, we don't have that at all. Whatever we do, we do set up. As for seeing the logs, in other words, you're saying you don't trust one of our administrators, Tony, that he has done logs or that he has looked at logs. And I would remind you that part of this is about micromanaging. You know, if Tony wants to show you logs, I'm not sure how much you'd have to redock. I'd have to take a look at that. I have a conversation with a lawyer tomorrow, so it would be nothing to ask him to do that. But he could maybe tell you how many pages he had right now. I don't know what, how much, I'm sure that different coaches put down different things in the logs and that's part of our concern.
Mark, do you have something to add?
Yes, I talked to quite a few community people about this. This has been a pretty hot topic out there. And I haven't found one community person to say that the coach should get paid for more than one week, week that they worked. And so there's a lot of preparation that's done in every job that doesn't get paid for. And so, and I, I talked to, actually talked to the soccer coach. That's my soccer coach the last three years. And that person said, no, I absolutely wouldn't expect to get paid for coaching soccer this year. And I talked to the winter and fall coaches and they absolutely said they wouldn't expect to get paid if they didn't coach. So I'm having a hard time with the seventy-five percent on a softball coach versus the softball coach. I have a daughter that plays softball and I, I have a hard time believing that she did seventy-five percent of her work that she normally do. So I if somebody would make a motion for one week, I would vote for it. That's all I have.
Can I say something, Randy?
Go ahead, Ellie.
Um, as far as the comment John made on us not trusting employees, I don't think that's it. I do think what we're trying to do is be fair to the coaches who've worked and figure out what we can do best for them. Comments like that just irritate me. So I just, I want to be clear that I think we're trying to figure out, this is a tough situation in general with the school and distance learning and coaching and everything. I don't think we need to add in, you know, extra drama and, you know, if we work as a team to figure out what's best, I think that works best.
I guess I would like to know what, what is the proposal from the administration to do with this?
Mary Lynn again, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. I still think we have to acquiesce to the A D to find out what his recommendations are. I also feel again, we should always pay our employees. But he would be the only one who knows exactly what they've been doing. I don't pretend to manage those areas. That is his job. So I really feel we should let people do their jobs and have them. It is a very good job. We, we certainly trust our employees and it's going to be our A D. Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, if you got this sheet.
Yep.
In there, at the bottom, there were recommendations that Tony worked out that Dawn and I looked at as a team. And these were our recommendations. You, as a board, decide if you want to accept those or change those. That's entirely up to you. That's what we do is give you the recommendations.
So this, this sheet is your recommendation then?
Correct, at the bottom, that was after today and we compared it to what other school districts are doing also.
Yep.
You can also see that in some of them, they required logs had to be taken and everything else, and that's what happened. That was based on them continuing to do that work outside. And like I said, there, there's somebody that was dropped off the list that made no contact. And did not start practice.
Okay.
Tony's got his hand up, unmute Tony.
Tony, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, um, we can dissect some of, some of, of everything that's going on. So when, when I went through and looked at the, at the, at the numbers for what I, what I recommended, you know, I, I took a look at the breakdown of, of what a head coach is required to do. And a head assistant, J V C squad coach, and then what a junior high coach is. And the bulk of the effort of, of a coach, of a head coach is in the preseason postseason duties and administrative. So once the season gets going, that's kind of actually a breath of fresh air to be able to relax and, and just coach your season. Moving down into the assistants, you, you spend the bulk of your time during the season. You might have some administrative duties or preseason postseason stuff that's delegated from the head coach. But by and large, most of your stuff is, is within those parameters. For junior high, you kind of almost run your own mini program. Because the high school coaches may have given you direction beforehand on what they like to work on. But then moving into the season, you get to, you create your own practice planning. You are in charge of those kids. So it, it's kind of a little bit more in the preseason postseason stuff. And, and, and less, um, more seasonal duties. So when I, when I took a look at that and then I, I did get those logs from, from my, my coaches. I, I then formulated that, that matrix for you, that, that word kind of breaks down. I, I did the percentages, it said percentage of season complete at the time of cancellation. I did that for, for a proration standpoint. And let me tell you how, let me explain how I got to that number. We started softball practice on March tenth, same thing with track. That week, we didn't have school on Monday, so we started on Tuesday. So we had four solid days of practice before we were essentially cut off. Baseball had optional days of arm conditioning that they have as an additional week. So they went Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week and they gave them Friday off again before we were cut off. What the high school league decided was to continue their bylaws and their seasons. So the, the official communication from them verbatim says, "Spring sports are officially in season, therefore all league rules, policies and bylaws surrounding participation are in effect." So they are essentially still under that spring coaches' control. There were specific parameters that they laid out about requiring what you can and cannot do for a coach and for a participant. And the, we were directed or and asked by the high school league to continue to stay in contact. Posting optional workouts, one of the things that the kids couldn't do is they couldn't give us workouts back. We couldn't say, well, you, you could say, um, I'm sorry, I freeze Macy as an example. Macy, I want you to go out and hit off a tee a hundred times today. Now Macy couldn't video her to Coach Godfertson, but she could say, hey, individually, you can do that skill workout. Tomorrow, we're going to work on getting under the ball from a pop fly, whatever the case, maybe you can, you, they could have done that. So they use a variety of methods to accomplish that, whether it was through email, the school communications, through remind, through text, phone calls. And as this kind of progressed, as a high school And as this kind of progressed, as the high school league never gave us an indication that the season was going to be over, they continued to tell us to prepare. And they made consensus, what, what's going to happen? Should we come back when the, when the governor allows us to come back on May 4th? What would a shortened season look like? So they had all these, these scenarios played out. And then that Thursday morning, when we had our high school league A.D.'s lead meeting, they were talking just that. Do we have a shortened postseason, longer regular season? Do we, do we have a culmination state tournament, longer same and less regular season? Those are all the conversations that were still happening. And it wasn't until that afternoon when we were told that our seasons were officially canceled. At that point, the, the high school league then went into offseason mode, and they said, all sports seasons are out of season. So that restricted the type of communication that we could have with our athletes. About a week later, five days later, they went back and went backwards a little bit and allowed spring coaches to continue to have contact again. They allowed coaches to have exit meetings to, to wrap up the season. And all throughout this process, the, the mental side of things, what was a pretty big push from me to the coaches to connect, to talk, to, to reach out, to, to kind of get the pulse of the team. Who's struggling? Who's been in contact? Those, those types of things with those kids. So that, that's kind of the, the rundown of, of how the high school league has, how they operated throughout this process. It was earlier April when I had a Zoom meeting with my coaches, and I, and I asked them to create logs of what they've done. What, where's a contact? What have they done to, during this distance coaching period, as they called it? And, and they do have logs for those things. Professional development things, first aid and CPR training, could be book studies for professional development, could be creating optional workouts, posting videos, communicate with athletes. All of those variety of things is, is what people can do. So that, that's kind of the, the contact that, that they had. But again, we, we couldn't mandate them to get together and go play catch for an hour. We can't mandate them to send videos of us, even though they may want that instruction and crave that instruction of, what am I doing wrong with this? How can I fix my technique? We couldn't give that to them because they can't accept that video. So it had to go a different direction in the distance coaching in making sure that you, you were working on the, the mental side of things while continuing to prepare, should there have been a season.
So Tony, I have one question. Was there a mandate from the governor on what we're supposed to do with this? I mean, he's the one that closed the season, so I would expect there should have been some.
All, all of it is local control. So what?
That was true, we'd probably still have a season.
I, I would, I would agree with you. But yeah, so, so that decision to pay was not, was not handed down. I did have a message from, I reached out to Nadine Schrader about this. She's the A.D. at Stock Rapids Rice. And she had told me that there were some concerns. And from the state's standpoint, if they had completed the directives of the athletic department and documented, they would, they would still get that funding for that. Is what, is what, is what she had given me. It wasn't a long paragraph of, of information, but that, that's kind of why there's a lot, there's a, there's a bunch of different things that are different. Like BBE went 50% across the board for everybody. Different, different schools mandate different things. I, I followed the model from John Verah. He was the, he's the A.D. at New London. I got that information from Justin Brown, who's at Litchfield, who's a friend of mine. So he, he forwarded that on to me early, very early on in this process. And that's kind of a framework that I use. But other, other schools did different things. Some are more simple tasks, just facilities management or inventory, down to book studies and more involved, I guess, processes for, for athletics.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions? Go ahead, Noel.
Yeah, that's why I was wanting to see the logs because apparently the logs would show that some coaches did 75%. And, you know, some did as low as like 30%. I just was kind of wanting to see the raw data on how you came up with these recommendations.
I, I looked, I looked at the, the things that they did and just kind of make, made a judgment call. Some people are much, much more efficient because they've been in the game as a head coach for 10 years, where others, perhaps for our, our track head coaches and, and Coach Godfertson for softball, they spend more time because at some times, they're, they're, they're doing it for the first time. So some may be more efficient in different areas than others, and that, that may wait differently for some people than others.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Thanks. With what Tony is saying with the logs, generally those logs, they are, we do have data privacy as far as any public employer and private employer. And we do defer to the, to the director with the logs. We don't put them out as public. I'm hoping everybody's being honest and giving Tony good logs. That's just like any coaching. We do ask for logs and calendars for unemployment when we have to report hours. And that does go to our unemployment. So we normally do ask for all their coaching logs and preparation logs, but that goes into an unemployment file and their personnel file every year. So just, I just wanted to bring that point up. With, with the logs, we do have them, but we don't usually make those public.
Okay. Good answer. And yeah, I guess I'm just having on this one sheet, you just, with the percent of the season that is preseason is 40%. And then the seasonal duties is 50%. And then the administrative duties is 10%. So there was no actual seasonal, like, there was no games. So I'm kind of thinking the most that could have happened would have been 50%. You know, all the preseason stuff and the administrative duties, that adds up to 50%. And I get, you know, some of them may not have done that. But to me, that looks like that would be the maximum of it.
Yes, you're right. I, I don't have that specific item. It's not an exhaustive list. I, I must have overlooked that one. I mean, lineups, not, not all of those things, you know, are done. I objectively tried to look at what feasibly should have been done and what is done for those different categories and, and made a judgment call from there.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has a question for Tony or any, any other comments? All right, we're going to move on from discussion to action items. We struck the, the action item on the contract, so right now, we're looking for the spring salaries for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question on the action items. It's, there's two action items that seem to say the same.
Same exact thing?
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I think that that first one is supposed to be hires, but I, I'm not sure on that one. I thought, I seen that as hires at one time because we have other hires, right? Are we, are we just not doing them?
Well, I don't know. It seems like they're trying to combine the hires that were voted down last meeting into this motion here, which really, according to parliamentary procedure, someone who voted no on the last meeting, hire those people, would have to make a motion to reconsider. That's, that's the actual parliamentary procedure for that. This is kind of shaky where you're trying to combine it into another action item.
Dawn, do you have some clarity on this?
Um, yes. The reason that is back on there, and I do agree with Noel, somebody does have to say no. Where we're coming into some sticky ground is these, these coaches already performed duty. So by law, we are required to pay them. So we, otherwise, it is considered wage, wage theft. If you do work and you don't get compensated for it, they can report us to the federal or state government, and then we are on the hook for wage theft. So I guess I, I was, sorry if I wasn't paying attention last meeting and didn't notice that they were voted no. But I, like I said, I didn't know some of these coaches were working. However, once they become workable, we have to, we have to pay these people. So I, I guess the, I don't know how we're going to pay these people without approving them as a coach. So that's, I guess, something the board would need to discuss because once you've done work and we have log of it, we're obligated by law to pay them.
Okay.
Stick Ellie first.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so referring to what Dawn said on if they're workable and have worked, we have to pay them. My question is, why are we having a special meeting on if we're paying them? If they have logs that they filled out for Tony and that they've done work, if we're going to get ourselves in trouble for wage theft of telling them they're not being paid, this is where I get confused. Why then is the board involved in this decision of not paying them?
Dawn, can you enlighten us?
The decision comes if they hadn't worked. I didn't know if every coach had worked or not. If they hadn't performed any duties, we're not obligated to pay them. If they performed coaching duties, and apparently, I didn't know this before, I had talked to Tony, that Tony had them preparing and doing coaching duties. At that point, they are, they are now payable to pay because they have performed services for the district. For the district. And that's where we could come into a situation in the fall. That's when it's really important that the board, you know, sets a precedent. That's a good precedent, like Noel had said. Because what if we come into fall and nobody's done anything? We're not obligated to pay them necessarily for their coaching because they haven't performed any work. However, the four coaches you mentioned, or five, I'm not sure how many, they have performed coaching duties. So the question now really isn't how, if we should pay them or not. It should really be how much services they've, they've earned. Because we do, we do have to follow federal law on that. So I think that the conversation was, I didn't know how many coaches had performed any services that were, that were payable. That's why that part came on, you know, whether we pay them or not. The second part is, once they've performed it and we have proof they've performed it, we are, we are held accountable.
Okay, Russ, I'll get back to you in one minute because I just want to clarify something. Everybody's got a list of spring hires in front of them with four names on it, right? Okay. Tony, did, are these four names, are these four, did these four people all do some coaching this year already? For spring? You're muted.
Okay, so the four that are on there, okay. Three, I'm trying to find it here.
Yeah, you don't have it, Tony, because it's what we talked about. You had Dylan, you got Jake, Tyler, and Michael.
Yep. So those had performed, the, the two tracks were a week of hires because of, of the lack of, of people applying for those. Dylan had coached last year, and, and he was preparing for that junior high season and just doing what he could to help out with the baseball season because that's what he loves to do. And Tyler was, has been the head coach for Trap for, for a couple of years already. So he's, he was already doing preparation and doing that work.
So the answer is, yes, these four people have worked for the school district in coaching for the spring.
Yep.
Okay. Now I'll, I'll yield to you, Russ, if you have something you want to add.
Nope, I think I got it answered.
Ellie, you got something?
I do. So when we look at this sheet with the, or the sheet that Tony had come up with and went through the logs and the duties and his recommendation, at this point, I, I mean, is that what we go by? Or can we still say something different?
I have a question. This is directed towards Director Gerard. Director Gerard, I wasn't at the last meeting, you chaired it, but you voted no on these hires. So I imagine if we're going to do something here, that somebody that voted no has to, has to change that?
That's correct, yes.
Let's, let's have some discussion on whether that should be done.
Okay. Like I said all along, I want to be fair to the coaches, and I want to pay them for the work they did. We didn't know about these logs. We're not able to see the logs, but Tony assured us they, they have the logs. And they did work for the school. So I don't have a problem with paying them if they worked. What was presented to us was we were going to hire these people if the season was already canceled, which didn't make any sense at all. So with the new information, yeah, of course, I want to pay people that worked. We're going to just have to take Tony's word that this person came up with 65 or 75% of the season, even though the season itself is 50% on their chart of the work. You know, but, but yeah, I think the whole thing, as far as voting to not hire people for a season that was already canceled, could have been avoided if we were well ahead of the game and being presented this list, say in, you know, like January or February. Get those things, and this is sort of a, a problem that reoccurs quite often here is last minute, yeah, you got the job, I just got to get it past the board. And then the board has questions. Better off to, to look ahead and get that stuff done early so that when it's presented to the board, the person's not already thinking they have a job and it's a done deal. Otherwise, you shouldn't even present it to the board. You don't want the board to, you know, if you just want somebody to rubber stamp it, you could get somebody to just rubber stamp the hires, you know.
Director Garrett, did you have something?
Yes, well, this was presented to us either in March or in, I believe in March, these were presented to us, right? And we moved it into April, which then moved it into May. So I think we should just keep that in mind as well.
I, I believe it was my. I, I believe it was my, I believe on our March meeting, it was my advisement to the board that with not knowing what was going on, that we should hold off on it. So we probably could have had them hired then. I'm in the interest, oh, John, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just, oh, go ahead, John.
No, go ahead, Don.
Sorry, John, Don, so close. What I did want to say is with that, um, I think at last month's board meeting, the last regular board meeting, I don't, I think it was under the premise that we didn't know that the, that, you know, I had no idea or clue that these people, you know, were working. You know, I guess I should have been in more contact with Tony. Maybe it wouldn't have come, you know, to this. So I do, on my behalf, apologize to the board for it coming to this. But in lieu of everything, I agree with Noel, they have, they have logged time. So at some point, the board needs to decide what percentage or what they want to pay these coaches. And I think there was a recommendation.
John, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, certainly. That's what I've said before, you know, it's just like everything else. We, I propose things for you. That's what our team did. We proposed things for you. And you had an excellent discussion on it, whether to pay them. It's up to you what you propose to pay them, or not propose, what you vote to pay them. If you see their online stuff properly, and that was my whole point before, the logs, that's how Tony looked at it. His, part of his job's to advocate for his coaches, obviously. As for these people being up, you said it already, that was way back in March. It was postponed, I believe, three times before you voted. And originally, it was brought up before, but the reason their names aren't on there, it's not because Tony is lax in going out and looking for people. He was looking for people before the first of the year. These are people that, some of them he had to talk into working. There's one person on this list that works three seasons, of course, got married this past year. I, my guess is he didn't plan on coaching. And he actually came in and helped for a while. There's another one on there, had other things planned. And Tony talked him into it. He said, really, we need this coach. We have to have it. And that person is on this list also, okay, two examples.
Uh, Director Garretts, did you have something you wanted to add?
Can I make a motion?
Um, you sure can.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation that, um, Tony and Superintendent Phelps and Don have made to the board.
I'll second that.
Um, are we in order here? I don't think so. I'm not going to accept that because I don't think we're in order. What I need is somebody that voted no on them hiring to, to vote to re, to readdress that vote. And I don't know who voted no.
Randy, I'll make a motion to readdress that.
I'll second it.
All right. It was moved by Director Holmes and seconded by Director Gerard, Gerard to
reconsider.
Reconsider last week's vote on spring hires of Dylan Comet, Jake Andrews, Tyler Lenz, and Michael Marshall. Is there any discussion on this?
I, I'd like it to just be known that we're reconsidering it based on the new information that they actually had performed duties prior to being approved by the board.
Yep. And I, I urge everybody, directors, administration, and public to understand the limitations of, of conversation and the flow of information limitation that has been through this COVID-19 thing. We're definitely in uncharted territory, so some mistakes will be made. So is there any other discussion? All right, I'll read the motion. It was moved by Director Holmes and seconded by Director Gerard to reconsider the hiring of Dylan Comet, Jake Andrews, Tyler Lenz, and Michael Marshall. We'll do this by roll call vote. If you vote yes for it, you'll say yes, or aye. If you vote against it, you'll say nay or no. Director Hackett, yes. Director Holm.
Yes.
Director Garretts.
Yes.
Director, Director Lang.
Yes.
Director Gerard.
Yes.
And Director Petron.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion passes six zero zero. All right. Then we're going to move on to the next one, which is spring salaries. What we have is, oh, go ahead, Ellie.
Oh, I was just, I think Russ, Russ on yours that you were showing, was it the one like that was seventy-five percent recommendation? Are you looking at the head coach and assistant JV squad?
I was looking at the one with JV softball, the breakdown with the hours, and then the seventy-five percent and fifty percent for the assistant coach. And then junior high softball thirty-five, um, varsity baseball seventy, assistant coach forty-five, and then the backside with trap shooting and track and field.
Okay, question Randy, or actually maybe Tony. On the recommendation, you have head coach at seventy-five. I'm just using varsity and JV softball, for instance, on the one Russ was looking at. And then this head coach, which I'm not sure where this one came from, but it says like preseason, postseason duties is forty percent. Seasonal duties is fifty, and then administrative duties is ten. So on the, the recommendation, you have seventy-five.
Lost her.
Ellie, if you can hear me, you're locked up right now.
Oh, that's interesting.
Okay, you're back live, Ellie.
Sorry, I was frozen. Okay, so my question was, on the, the one Russ was looking at, the varsity JV Tony, it says, you know, that you're recommending like a seventy-five percent pay for them. But on the other one, like Noel was saying, the preseason, postseason, and the administrative duties equal fifty percent, and the season fifty. On the recommendation, the extra twenty-five percent, what are, like, what are we looking at for that?
So what, what they've missed would be, would be the games. That would be, that would be the biggest, the biggest chunk out of there. I, I, on my breakdown for, for a head coach, I attributed about ninety-five percent of the stuff they did for preseason and postseason was completed. So of that forty percent, they did about ninety-five percent of that. For the seasonal duties, I'd say about forty percent is what, what they were able to accomplish. The bulk of that is those games that they didn't get, and then some of those practices. Administrative duties, I'd say about eighty percent of that category is able to be completed. A lot of that stuff, you know, like schedule and fundraising and coaches clipboard and professional development, those are performance physicals and fees, those are all stuff that they had to get in order before, before they were the practice. So I said about eighty percent of that.
Okay, so like this, this preseason, postseason, seasonal, I mean, some of these are all added together. This is just a general idea of what it is.
Yeah, I, I just broke it down by what, what, where, where most of their duties and time lies. Yep.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have any questions on, on this? I guess, I guess I had one, and Tony, maybe you can address this, but is there a chance of getting into title violation by paying them different amounts? If some are men and some are women and?
Um, I don't believe so because we are paying our females more than males. Because if, if you take a look at the recommendation for varsity baseball, they're at seventy and forty-five percent. So they have, they have less. Same thing with, with junior highs. We have thirty-five percent for, um, for junior softball and thirty percent for junior baseball.
I just, I just want to make sure that you're pretty sure that this, that your math will add up to so that we won't end up in a title violation.
Yeah, no, um, no, I don't think so.
Do you have something to add?
Yeah, I was, uh, I was looking at the assistant coach columns for the same two sheets. And preseason, postseason duties is seven percent, and administrative duties is three percent. So you've got ten right there. Say they did all of those. And, uh, I'm looking at assistant coaches in a range of like fifty percent, forty-five percent. And keep in mind, there was no season, but as far as lineups, instruction techniques, injury assessment, setup and teardown of equipment daily, practice planning, supervision, bus, locker room, practice, games, none of that happened. Assistant play calling and strategy, none of that happened. So where do you get that other forty percent for an assistant coach?
I was, I was looking at, um, they still, they still did that distance coaching. Those, those coaches were still actively involved in, it wasn't just the head coach posting things, it was the assistant coaches actively involved in, um, in, in maintaining contact with those, with those players. The setup and teardown, those stuff, that stuff was out, and then it had to get put away. And then when it was canceled, they had to put it in storage. They were still practice planning. That's where I attributed that.
Okay. Director Garretts, do you have something?
Well, I think we have to remember too, that Tony's point is they're still, from the, every direction for the Minnesota High School League was to continue to keep these coaches on, right? So I think that we, I don't know, I, I, to just to look at purely by the duties, I, I don't think is necessarily fair either because it wasn't up to them not to, you know, maybe if we'd had different guidance and all that, we would have handled it right. I'm sure Tony would have handled it differently, right? Or everybody probably would have. But I just think the way that they said to keep them on, keep distance, I think some of that we have to attribute onto this as well, not purely just look at the seasonal duties. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree with you, and that's why I asked if there was, there was anything that came down from the state as what we should do because they're the ones that told them to keep on coaching. And then here you guys figured out, now it's local control, right?
Right. That would have been too helpful.
Go ahead, Mark.
I agree that they should be paid something since they work. Can we, can we do something like fifty percent of recommendation or something like that? Or are we stuck having to make a motion on the recommendation?
I'll go back. You can make any motion you want. All we did was feed you the information and suggestions based on Tony was a huge part, but Dawn and I, we all talked about it. That's what we finished up and got that piece for you today. But that's entirely up to you as a board, what percent you want to give.
Um, this is Noel.
Go ahead, Noel.
We've already got a, a motion and a second. So if you want to propose something different, propose it as an amendment to that motion. That'll keep us straight.
I didn't think we had a motion on this one yet. Did we?
Yeah, it was moved by Ross.
I'm in the order.
I think he did. I don't think he accepted it.
Oh.
The chair did not accept.
Yeah, we did that. He, he moved it before, before we hired them coaches, so.
Okay.
So I'm still looking for a motion out there.
Randy, this is Russ. So I, I will go back and make, I'll do my motion again just to accept what, um, the athletic director and superintendent and Don, the business manager, recommend paying the coaches.
All right. It was moved by Director Garretts and seconded by Director Lang to approve the spring salaries sheet pay that we all have in front of us. That's what you moved, right, Russ? All right.
Correct.
Any discussion? Russ, go ahead, Noel. Uh, Noel, you're muted.
There you go. Um, yeah, absent any data, um, we just, you know, we have to pay them because they worked. And we just have to go with Tony's opinion, even though it seems kind of, it doesn't make a lot of sense as far as, if you look at the, the stuff we did get, you know, the seven percent preseason and three percent administrative, and then you look down and it's fifty percent pay. It doesn't make a lot of sense, but I guess if we had the, all the data, you know, then we could look at it ourselves and make a reasonable amendment to that motion. But absent that, we got nothing to go on but what was recommended. We don't have any other information.
Thank you. Director, do you have something that you wanted to add?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The reason we hire an A D is to do this very work so that we don't have to try to do that. He knows what his people do. He knows their value, and I really trust his judgment. I think he's being very fair and very honest. And I think we need as a board to support that gentleman and our administration. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion on the motion in front of us? It was moved by Director Garretts and seconded by Director Lang to approve the spring salaries, which is explained by this sheet that we all have in front of us. It's the administration's recommendations. Voting aye or yes will be to approve. Director Hackett, aye. Director Holm.
Aye.
Director Garretts.
Aye.
Director Lang.
Aye.
Director Gerard.
Aye.
Director Petron.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries five, one, zero. Upcoming meeting schedule, Tuesday, June ninth, we have a policy meeting at eight-thirty in the morning, and Monday, June twenty- And Monday, June twenty-second, there will be a regular board meeting. Director Phelps.
Superintendent Phelps, I just wanted to say before we finish tonight, my apologies for putting David's, uh, up there today. Noel was absolutely right. It has to be a three-day notice, and it was not a three-day notice. And that's where the complication came in, in trying to redirect the voting tonight. You know, putting his one in there, and I got that, but there, if you notice on the original one, there are a whole bunch. That's what happens when multiple people put together a board.
Okay. Any other meetings anybody wants to put on the schedule? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It was moved by Director Garretts and seconded by Director Gerard to adjourn the meeting at eight forty-six P M. You will mo, aye or yes to adjourn the meeting, or no or nay to not adjourn. Director Hackett, aye. Director Holm. Director Holm.
Aye.
Director Garretts.
Aye.
Director Lang.
Aye.
Director Gerard.
Aye.
Director Petron.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero zero, meeting adjourned. Thank you.